Please stand to the main committee. The House of Representatives, the Senate, and the House of Lords. The House of Representatives, the Senate, and the House of Lords. One nation under God, indivisible, never be destroyed. For all. A meeting called order Monday, the 13th, 2013, 6:30 PM. Barbara, would you call the rule? Mr. Jovanangelo.
Present.
Mr. Jim.
Present.
Mrs. Wolford.
Here.
Mr. Sepora. Mr. Baldeneri.
Here.
Mr. Forge.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Present.
Six present. May I have approval minutes from the April 8, 2013 meeting, please?
Madam Mayor, I move the minutes to be April 8, 2013. Meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the Secretary's desk, where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Close. Motion carried. We have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of April, 2013, please. You have a motion. Some move, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wolford, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldeneri, all in favor?
Aye.
Line post. Motion carried. All right, this time out we have citizens' requests and comments. If you have -- Alex, did you want -- you're there later, right?
Just after your committee report.
Okay. If anyone has -- if you wish to speak, would you please go to the back to the microphone, state your name and your address, and I might give you five minutes. Jimmy Miller gets three, Jim Kavicki gets two.
Two and a half, Mayor, two and a half. Two point five. Okay, am I running on the meter? Does that count the address? Jim Kavicki, 821 Chestnut Street. Companies for Council this evening, based on recent reports in the newspaper and those unconfirmed reports that travel through the grapevine throughout the city, there seems to be an accepted agreement between the public and those in law enforcement that there is a drug problem here in the city of Latrobe. We are being faced with a number of situations that require medical attention and assistance, the interventions of council representatives at times, directly and indirectly, and of course, our drug task force. Not too long ago, the Sheriff of Westmoreland County, after suffering a couple -- a number of incidents within his own department, had asked his own administration to look at and seriously implement a zero tolerance policy within his own administration first while developing a program for its employees for drug testament -- testing, random testing, and I'm sure many of you in the business industry and other areas of concern, economic concern, are pretty familiar with the process. I'm here to ask Council to join in that spirit of leadership in showing that beginning here at Council First, that we seriously take on the responsibility of addressing this problem. And so I ask you this evening to consider a motion to declare a zero tolerance in the city, beginning with the administration here accepting the opportunity to self-test as an example to the rest of the folks here at the city. And I thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
That was under two and a half of you.
You have time left. I want to see what happens.
Good to see everybody.
Please stop. Jim, I have a question for you. Is that -- does that require a blood test?
It's usually urine analysis.
Well, actually, you know, there's a number of -- there are a number of different tests. The most inexpensive test is urine analysis, and that ranges anywhere between eight dollars and $35 per administration. And again, depending upon what you're testing for, the period of time that you usage, all those issues. But again, you know, I'm sure you have -- we have folks on board that have served under those conditions or familiar with putting that together. I think the most staggering statistic that I've read is that, you know, about 60 percent of all the drugs produced in the world are used here in the United States. And it's 77 percent of those drug users are employed, which somewhat shattered my idea of what a drug user was. I mean, all of us seem to think that it's somebody that's, you know, the dredge of society. But among us, you know, I guess if we just did it by that ratio, there's quite a few drug users sitting in this room. Whether we want to admit it or not statistically, it's there. So I think there's a true opportunity to begin this dialogue through the leadership that you all have at your hands to begin the process of moving this all forward.
I think it's important to note that that happens to be a mandatory subject of bargaining, random drug testing, so for the bargaining unit employees, it would be something that would have to be negotiated, but for the non-bargaining employees, it could be a policy.
And as a condition of the commercial driver's license that our public workers have in public works, they all submit to it?
That's correct.
And Joe does as well. And I believe it's about $35, I think, a test. But yeah, we already -- for public works, all those who operate heavy equipment for the city already do that, but it is a part of bargaining.
It's required by law to obtain a CDO, yes.
I think we like do this under new business, maybe discuss about maybe Council doing it first to show our employees that we're concerned about this.
To what end? Excuse me, Fabian. To what end?
Oh, everybody with a calendar here for --
To what end? Has anybody here been impaired during a meeting?
Not that I know of, but I'm asking.
Then to what end is this testing?
I just think we should do it to show these guys that we're going to be asking our employees to do it. We should be doing the same thing.
The drug testing companies in this country have sold the employers, government, and school districts, school districts and bill of goods.
Anyone else? Mr. Bolton?
Jimbo, 225 Irving Avenue. Last month, a report was given on the waste management here. Get rid of our two roll-off trucks, move two employees over the street, and we'll save money. They forgot to add that it would also give away our commercial business. And I read in a paper where a statement was made that not only will these companies haul our wastes, but they'll even pay us. How these different statements are being made without even seeing the bid, I don't know. It seems as though some people are being coached on by lobbyists from various companies here to what to say pertaining to this. This city was broke 2011. You don't want to admit it, but you were broke. You could see it coming. You don't have to pay $80,000 to hire a company to tell you you were broke. Thank goodness for your hailstorm. For some homeowners, it was a pain in the neck. The city was a goldmine. Nobody paid attention to that transfer station that you tried to give it away in 2012. That transfer station from your figures, your budgets, had a revenue of $1.1 million. Your commercial business, your roll-off trucks, a little over $500,000. Someone had made a statement here a year ago, eight months ago, that it was losing money. I don't know how you lose money with that kind of a revenue. In 2012, you had revenue below $900,000 at the transfer station, $450,000 in the commercial My arithmetic is you're doing way over a million dollars, nearly a million dollars in that transfer station. It's the only thing in the city of Latrobe that's making money for this. Otherwise, the taxpayers would be paying much more in taxes. In fact, I figured you'd have had to raise taxes in 2012, at least five mils. Made a nice general fund for you. In fact, you even dipped in, paid off your bills in 2011. 2012, you borrowed $103,000, developed your budget for 2013. Why are we such a hurry to get rid of the hauling person? You wanted a transfer station. And when you opened a business, one I think was illegal, you could have still awarded the residential bid to a company. But you dragged your feet on that and delayed it for a year. At that time, people I think in the room knew that you were going to try to come in the back door and get how you want to give away the hauling of it. No company's going to take over a private company, take over a business that's losing money and not making money. They have to make money, they have to pay their shareholders, they have to show a profit. This transfer station and the hauling of it, everything should be set up as a separate company, separate banking accounting, everything. Separate those bills, separate the income. So at the end of every month, you know exactly how much you've paid in expenditures, how much money do you have coming in. Right now, I think you're folding everything into your general account, general government here, and I don't really think you have a real handle on what's coming in. I think it's hidden in a book someplace. I really believe, I recommend, that you go on record, do the city manager approval where to call up the companies that are going to bid here, what Wednesday you're going to open bids for this. And ask them that you're going to reject all the bids. Set everything aside for a year for a study to see what's coming on. I'd also say move $300,000 out of the general fund into the transfer station account as seed money. That's really profit that the transfer station made for you. Give Mr. Bush permission to order another new truck. At $300,000, be seed money for a couple of months till you really start getting your profit back into the transfer station. The transfer station has always made money. It's made an awful lot that other people are looking at it. They want it. If I can take over the transfer station tomorrow, give it to me. I'll give you a couple bucks every year. It's a moneymaker. I was up there Saturday morning dumping, and it was raining, and there were people in the line. By the first of the year, if you kept good books, your salaries, all your expenses, whether it be diesel fuel, truck repairs, you name it, you should know exactly what it costs you. The amount of money that comes in, you should know exactly how much -- how many tons of waste you send to landfill, what it costs, how much everything costs, so that you can add, subtract, and say how much you made at that transfer station. Trying to separate this transfer station, the hauling, separating part of the transfer station as part of the city garage, they have to work together. When something needs cleaned up or repaired, you have the garage that sends the mechanic down there to take care of it. You isolate this and have one company hauling, you want another city employees to take care of things, you're asking for trouble. It's not going to work. That would be the same way as if you walked into Lakeview Steel Board of Director, and you said, "I have a company, non-union company, that'll run the rolling mill for me," and you take the employees in the rolling mill and send them up to the mail chow, and all we have to do is collect the money and they'll send the rolls of wire out to our customers, and they'll just send us money. That's what you're saying here. You wouldn't last five seconds inside of a board directors like that. You're looking for trouble. My recommendation, like I said, you can take it or leave it. But I would say give the city manager power to start moving, give Joe Bush power to start moving. Look for another bid for your residential garbage. Set it up same as what we're doing right now for a five-year contract. These large compacters, back here, these containers, I don't think they're going to fly. They're too big and clumsy in what I've seen traveling around the city on garbage days. Quite a number of people, a number of people do not even use a small recycling bin. You have to convince people that you have to recycle, but they aren't doing it right now. Like I said, I think right now you should reject what you started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. If anyone else wants to speak?
Mr. Bolton, I'd just like to take exception to some of the remarks you made. You stated that the city is broke. That implies we're unable to pay our bills, that we have bad credit. That's not the case. We pay our bills. We have excellent credit. We run a balanced budget. We've done so irrespective of the manner in which we've done it. Thank God for the hailstorm, yes. But nonetheless, we are not broke, and I take exception. You keep referring to that repeatedly, month after month after month, that the city is broke. We are not broke. Another thing is, another statement that you made is that this deal is coming in the back door, that somebody is coming in the back door. That may very well be the case, an attempt to come in the back door, but the back door's going to be closed as far as this council person is concerned. And the revenues of the transfer stations are not hidden in the books. They're in plain view. A previous manager, he had an accounting system with, let's say, that was less than ideal, but the revenues, expenses, and all that that is associated with the transfer station are clearly in -- on the books, and they can be due by anyone. Am I correct, Mr. Gattiani?
The general fund does list out the sanitation, solid waste budget for both revenue and expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. All right.
Mr. Bolton, I think, and not impartial answer to Mr. Baldeneri, the transfer station is not being sold. We are not leasing out the transfer station. And I would have to take some exception to, actually, I agree with you, the city is going broke. For instance, the budgeted amount at the transfer station that we're scheduled, we are budgeted to receive is $700,000. Now, to date, in four months, we have taken in $132,000, which is considerably below that. So if we keep that pace, the projected revenues will probably fall about between $250,000 and $300,000 short. So you are correct, and regardless of how you move money around, it's going downhill. I don't believe Mr. Baldeneri was here the day that we had the presentation and the experts that were hired, the professionals, and they in fact did say that, I believe, in two years, we will be something like $500,000 in debt, and that debt will be cumulative. They predicted a $500,000 debt for probably three or four years after that. So you are correct in that matter. And I want to thank you for your insights, but clearly, we're not, we don't have the hailstorm type of revenue and the budget overstated what we probably will eventually have. So I predict we're going to have a bigger deficit this year.
Mr. Jim? Mr. Jim, I don't necessarily agree. First of all, they said, that's correct, at the rate that we're going, and if we don't take a look at things, and I think you could probably say that for every household in the world, if you don't watch your spend every year, sooner or later, your expenses are going to outweigh your revenues. So I think that's, and I think that's why we did this study. I think we all expected that, and I think it didn't show us anything that we don't know. But what it is going to do is help us find ways in which to prevent that from happening. And what I don't think we know at this point is, you know, we're three years out from the hailstorm, and you know, we still haven't seen the revenues at the transfer station drop back to where they were before the hailstorm. And I think we may have introduced that transfer station to people that weren't aware that it was there. And I think that we may be able to maintain some of those revenues, certainly not all of them, but it shows us that if we put an attempt into marketing that transfer station, we may be able to generate even more revenue than we currently are. And the other thing, Mr. Bolton, is there are members of council that aren't, I haven't seen enough numbers to convince me yet. You know, we keep talking about how we're going to save money if we do this and we do that, but I haven't seen anybody show me any numbers. And you know, you can sit here and say, "Well, if this wouldn't have happened, and if that wouldn't have happened." But it did happen, and we have balanced our budget every year. Yes, we've dipped into our savings account, but that happens in everybody's life. You have an expense that you don't expect, that's why you have a savings account. And we continue to have a contingency fund and a savings account to help us with those rainy days. Do we have problems financially? Yes. Does every municipality our size have problems, probably in the country? Pretty much, yes. That's why the government has funded these programs. We didn't spend $80,000 on a study. Some of that money, at least half of that money, was a grant from the state, I believe, or the federal state, state grant to help us fund that study. So, you know, there's a lot of misinformation flying around, and we aren't broke, we've never been broke, and you know, are we going to be broke in five years or 10 years? Who knows? If we don't do something now, yes. Is this the answer? I don't know. I haven't seen the numbers, and I'm not willing to make any kind of commitment until somebody shows me the numbers.
Mr. Jovanangelo?
Mr. Bolton, there are four people that bid it on that transfer station up there, and there would be nobody coming through the back door. Everybody's going to see the numbers, and you know, once we get open them up and stuff, we start comparing stuff before we even vote on it. So there would be no backdoor stuff going on here.
I'm looking at your budgets. You aren't broke. $207, $208, $209, $210. You have deficit budgets, and money came out of your general fund.
Exactly.
You were in trouble by 211. I think maybe if you wouldn't have had that ice storm, either 211 or 212, you'd have had to go to the bank and borrow money to finish paying your bills.
We'd probably had the old manager tail.
Well, that --
That many years ago, we're all saying.
Well, we didn't. The bottom line is, we didn't. We, that's why we have, that's why you have a savings account, that's why you have a contingency fund, and that's why for years, back to the days when Neil Fent was on council, before I got on council, he badgered his council to quit spending more, spending more than they're taking in. You can't continue to overspend your revenue. It's just common sense. And that's why in 2004, we laid people off in the city, in the city, so because we were having funding issues. And we try every year to go through those things and decide, you know, can we continue the service levels that we have? Do we have to reduce service? But right now, we've built our contingency fund, we've built up our savings account, and right now, we're, I think we're in better financial shape than we've been in a long time because we have a contingency fund to draw from. I'm not saying we spend that unwisely and we use that year after year to balance our budget, because that is not the right thing to do. I agree with you, Mr. Bolton, on that. But those are some of the decisions we have to make, and that's what the study has told us, is you are not in, and what was the word they used, in crisis situation right now. But if you do not act or do not take some precautions and continue to spend in the same method that you have been spending, then you will be by 2016. So it's a warning sign, but we are not, we are not broke.
You would have been if you had the ice storm.
What is should, could have, Mr. Bolton? We're not playing that game.
You're still --
All right, Mr. Bolton.
$103,000, you had to borrow from your general fund again to balance your budget for 2016.
We had it to borrow.
If we didn't have it, if we didn't have it.
We had it to borrow.
It's just like your home budget.
Exactly.
If you're spending more, your home budget, you keep taking from your savings, you're going broke.
But when your savings is gone, you're in big trouble. And right now, our savings isn't gone, so we're not in big trouble yet.
No, you're still one.
But we have to keep working to that, to that end.
All right, Mr. Bolton.
I think you're skilling the golden goose here, though.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Charles Backcroft, I live at 242 Avenue A. I have pictures of the wooden bridge on Avenue on the bicycle path. I was wondering when it's going to get fixed and when's it going to happen, because the way I see it, and there are holes, and kids can turn around and go down there and basically can go through in certain spots. One part of the bridge is literally broke. So I mean, I have my camera right here. I can take one up to you and show you certain spots. And also on the gazebo area, okay, steps going up, there's a ankle breaker.
What's gazebo, Mr. Backcroft? The one on Creekside Park?
Yes, sir.
And that little bridge that, yeah, I'm familiar with that. That falls under the jurisdiction of L U P R, Parks and Rec Department.
Rosie, could you have, do you look at that?
I will.
Thank you.
Because I was told by one of the gentlemen at work, I ain't going to mention his name, I really don't even know his name.
We are demented at this moment.
You're right. That these guys are looking at two different ways of doing it, okay? About somebody coming in, drilling holes, and putting pylons in, and then you got D E R and D E P coming in.
It's not us. It's, it would be Latrobe Uniti Park and Rec, and their meeting is Thursday, and I think it's here, is it here?
I think it's here.
I think it's in this building Thursday.
Same all the way.
I know, I think it was, I think it was at Uniti last time. I think it's here at 4:30. And that would be a decision that the commission would make, not this council.
Right.
And whether it was, how it was to be fixed, and I think, is it closed right now? Do they have it blocked off?
No.
Okay.
I'll just cross a little bit and go to the day.
I'll talk to Jeannie Ashley and see what's going on and find out.
You do. I can take the camera one up there and show you the pictures.
I can look at them afterwards if you're going to be here, but, and then give me your phone number, and I'll call you after I talk to Jeannie.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, thank you, everyone. Committee reports? Yeah, okay, Alex?
Now, as a committee report, I'd like to offer a couple people who joined us here tonight. Cindy Biddle and Katie Flynn are of R C M V D Diagnostics Incorporated. They've done an energy audit of this building, and they just want to give Council a brief update on the progress of that and help Council and the public know of what they can do to learn more about the energy audit for this building. Katie, Cindy?
Hi, good evening. I'm Katie Flynn, and I'm here with Cindy Biddle, who's one of my coworkers. We're at R C X Building Diagnostics, and right now, we're forming in the midst of what's known as a level-two energy audit on this particular building. Overall, this building was originally built in 1978, and it's kind of an interesting building in regards to the fact that it has many different uses. The first and the entirety of the second floor are used predominantly as office spaces that are open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, your traditional office hours. Then other portions of the building, such as the police station, the EMS station, also the fire station, are 24/7 operational, which kind of offers up a unique perspective on a building, because you're part of it that's always in continuous operation, and then part of it that's only used for a portion of the day. So what we did is really walked through all of the, through both onsite analysis and offsite analysis. We looked at all of the building systems, from the envelope, the HVAC, to lighting, and even the plumbing as well, and looked at how the building's currently using energy and where opportunities for reducing that energy consumption exist. So as we were walking through the building, we took some thermal images of the envelope. I noticed overall, it wasn't that bad. The building is somewhat secure. There are some instances of air infiltration where you have any penetration on the envelopes. You have some leakage around building windows and also exhaust and where lines enter into the building, very similar like when we do at home. So if you had like cable lines running into your house at home, most likely there's some air infiltration around there. The same thing's occurring in areas of this building as well. Something we noticed about the HVAC, much of the HVAC system is actually original to the building. That includes the chiller system, all of the air handling units. One thing that took it out of place was the boiler system. That was replaced about 10 years ago. But overall, the systems aren't -- But overall, the systems aren't operating as efficiently as possible. And if you get into kind of hybrid upgrades, things like switching off your chiller and improving your envelope simultaneously, that's when you can really start to see some of the KDA in this building. One of the biggest issues in the HVAC system here is really the chiller. Anyone can see it if they go out to a parking lot, it's on the top of the EMS garage, and that chiller is actually original to the building. It's been kind of rehabbed along the way, but at this point, more money is being spent on maintaining that chiller on an annual basis than it's actually consuming in energy consumption. So that was kind of the biggest issue, I would say, in regards to the HVAC system. In regards to hot water, we don't see any major issues. There's not a lot of areas where hot water is used in the building other than sinks and showers, but in general, the hot water use in this building isn't that bad. And overall, your domestic hot water tank, it's not the most efficient tank available, but it's okay for what you guys are using it for right now. In regards to lighting, we're kind of in a mid-swap-out point. Some of the lighting here has been retrofitted from what's known as T-12 lighting down to T-8 lighting, and that's great. We're going to highly encourage that you continue on on that path. We also saw some opportunities for de-lamping and also installing occupancy sensors for some areas of the building where the use is intermittent. So areas like bathrooms where someone could go and use a bathroom and leave the lights on for four or five hours if someone else uses the same bathroom. In regards to plug load, it's pretty much your traditional office plug loads that we came across, things like computers, et cetera. We did come across a couple televisions in certain areas of the building that seemed to be left on 24/7. So I think with some occupied engagement, we can influence that behavior and really lower the amount of energy that's used for things like plug-in clothes, you know, fans being left on, computers being left on, and TVs being left on when no one's in the room. In regards to overall plumbing, the fixtures in place in this building are not as efficient as possible, but since the water use in this building is relatively low, it's not a bigger issue. But over time, we would recommend that all of the fittings, things like toilets, sinks, get replaced with more water-efficient fixtures. Overall, in terms of energy consumption, 50% of the energy that you guys use in this building is strictly for space heating. So it's how much energy is used in this building really depends on how bad of a winter we have. If we have a mild winter, then the energy consumption in this building is going to be pretty good. But if it's a bad winter, then you're really going to feel that in terms of your bill. Overall, space heating is 51% on average, space followed by lighting, which is 20%. So 20% of the energy used in this building goes for lighting. Only 9% goes for space cooling. And I think that's a function of, at some parts of the summer, your chiller actually becomes non-functioning. So kind of when it's working the hardest, the thing actually shuts off. So I wouldn't be surprised if you might see that increase afterwards. A lot of energy in this building is also used for ventilation. The air handling units are operated 24/7 to meet all of the fresh air requirements for the building. As I mentioned before, some areas are 24/7 and some are just office space to use during the day. But in order to meet the fresh air requirements, these air handling units have actually been just set up to run 24/7. So that means during the wintertime, they're bringing clean air in and dumping it into the building, potentially unnecessarily. So that's something that we want to look at fixing that'll also impact your space cooling, your space heating numbers, which make those numbers actually put out as well. Some of the energy conservation measures that we've identified so far, the biggest one is retrocommissioning, which is kind of like giving your HVAC system a tune-up. It's...especially if we'll come in and look at only existing equipment and controls and make sure everything is operating as it should be and kind of tweak the system to work universally together. In a building like this where you've had some spaces that have changed over time, some walls have gone off, some walls have gone down, any kind of building that's changed functionality like that is a really good candidate for retrocommissioning. Again, it's very similar to a tune-up. If your car wasn't getting very good mileage, you might get in to get a tune-up as well. We also looked at installing programmable thermostats. As of right now, there are no setback thermostats in the building, so whatever temperature the buildings are set to run to during occupied hours, they're also setting that during unoccupied as well. So on the weekends, the offices are still being heated and cooled to the same temperature as if they were fully occupied. Next thing we looked at was an air handling unit retrofit that would enable the air handling units to not simply operate on or off full blast, they can operate at different levels. So essentially, these staged to let some fresh air in or no fresh air, they can kind of gauge it and make it variable air volume. Yeah, so essentially, give more zones into the building, more zone control, so that way we don't need to heat the offices downstairs in order to keep the police officers comfortable. Buildings should be on their separate zones. We also looked at replacing the chiller. The biggest savings associated with that was actually not the energy savings, it's actually in the avoided maintenance that is being performed on the chiller annually. We also...we didn't just look at the energy savings associated, we also looked at maintenance benefits as well, I should add that. We looked at the boiler, which at this time is not favorable. We also looked at replacing the domestic hot water tank, which again is not favorable at currently at this time. Some other ones that we're looking at, the water-efficient fixtures, like I mentioned before, we were looking at some deciduous tree planting along the west and south, the southern sides of the building. The deciduous trees will block the summer sun, but then when fall comes and the leaves fall, they'll actually allow winter sun to still have access to the building. So that way, during the summer, it's keeping the building cooler, and during the winter, it's still allowing all of the solar radiation into the building to lower the heating goals. We are looking at exterior and interior lighting fixtures, especially in the garages. We are looking at lighting controls, things like occupancy sensors. We're also looking at in the garages, all the garages are heated but not cooled. We're looking at putting actually insulated garage doors in those spaces to reduce heat loss in the winter in those spaces. And we're also looking at potentially using geothermal from the stream that's located right behind the building.
That's pretty good. So we are compiling a written report for all of these conservation measures, and it's a very detailed report. It shows how we expect any of the conservation measures to affect the energy over time, and will show basically a cash flow analysis for how we recommend to implement the different changes. And we did try to take into account not only budgetary restrictions and things like that, but local...the local utility providers provide a lot of rebates and incentives for different measures, so we add those into our paybacks and into the cash flow analysis. So if you need to see a copy of our report, it is...the final copy is actually going to be published to West Penn Power on the 22nd of this month, and Alex should have a copy probably before the 22nd, the 20th to the 22nd. So if you need to see it, feel free to give him a call, I guess.
We'll be placing that on the web for the public to have access to as well for comment and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you. Any committee reports? Council? Richard? David? Stephen?
Ellen.
Ellen. All right, number eight, board and authority reports. Hannah?
Your report.
Thanks. My answer to the service. Rosie, what is anything for the park service?
Mark, excuse me. I stopped in to see Ms. Powell today, and she told me, she showed me a list of properties in this town that needs their grass cut. It's incredible. It disturbs me beyond just about anything in town. When I walk around here and I see the condition of many of the properties in town without their grass cut, without their hedge trimmed, without their shrubs taken care of, it's really, it distresses me. And am I correct, how many, just this week, would you have? 30, 40, 50 houses that she noted? And she had that many the previous week? And it's up to the...many of those houses are unoccupied. The realtors in this town or the banks, whoever owns the houses, aren't maintaining their houses when they're left empty. Landlords aren't requiring their tenants to cut their grass. Tenants aren't requiring their landlords to cut their grass. So what we have is a lot of really bad-looking properties in this town that causes property values for each and every one of you to go down, and this is something that doesn't take a whole lot of effort, believe me. But it is rather...it is disturbing to see this. My two cents. The city's broke, Jim, but the grass needs cutting.
That's three cents. All right, department reports? Chief Boomer?
A couple things. We've installed a camera system, I guess... We've installed a camera system that has 24/7 surveillance, not only in the building but some surrounding areas. I don't want to give any locations because of security reasons, but we're still getting the bugs out of it, adjusting the cameras, the angles. When the sun's going down, we have to adjust so we don't get a glare so we can see. It's also take up to 30 days what's going on, and before we even had the full camera system implemented, we made two arrests and one drug bust already with the camera systems. So they are working, they're going, continuing to work, and it's been a good addition. Not only is it required for accreditation, but we took it a little further for crime prevention and proactive measure that'll really help the police department. Second, I wanted to talk a little bit about the drug problem. Yes, there is a drug problem, and we're putting all our efforts in an aggressive manner in trying to curtail this drug problem. We have been having a lot better results lately, and I continue to see it be an uphill battle, but we're doing all we can to try to combat that. Also, I'd like to mention that this is Councilman Boldenary will be pleased for this. The signs on Lincoln Road Shopping Center have curtailed the illegal parking immensely. I've been doing some drive-bys numerous times in the day and evening, and it gets way, way down. So the signs, the fire ring signs, I am the enforcement. When people get $50 tickets, they tend to park in spaces instead of in the fire rings. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jim? The forms out front, system you put out front there for drugs and stuff like that, complaints, how's that working out for you?
We get a lot of complaints, a lot of the complaints we are aware of. We get repeat complaints, but probably with every five or six complaints is a new one that we're not aware of or semi-aware, but we have more information. So it is working. Anything that's proactive like that is welcome.
Okay. Good morning. John?
Just a few things. As everybody knows, we had quite a busy month here in the city. Two major fires within two weeks apart. Just to let you know that the department worked very hard to contain those fires to the areas of origin. We train hard and we work hard. I put my department second to none, and that's what the taxpayers pay for, our services. But not alone, our department. Chief Boomer and Joe Bush, their fellows were on the street as well as our department. And you really have to come out sometime to see when there's a major incident going on like there was, how it all comes together. The police officers did a fantastic job with the crowd control and keeping order to that level, and after the incident, we cleaned up a good portion of the mess. Our department working along with Joe's guys from Public Works. If you didn't know there was a fire, you wouldn't know there was a fire. It was that good. I commend all departments involved, especially my own, and you people here in the city are entitled to the services that we bestow upon you, and that's what you get for your tax dollars. So from me to you, I'm glad we can serve you, and we look to do so for a long time. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Joe?
Yes, with the change of the weather here, nicer weather coming, Public Works, we're focused on doing exactly as you heard tonight, Mr. Boldenary and what the code officer's doing. We're trying to clean up, neaten up, and make the town look as it should. With that, we need cooperation from all the citizens. Don't blow your grass out on the road. If there's some litter there, pick it up, just merely don't blow it over into your neighbors. I've gotten a lot of criticism lately about the number of signs that I take down. Garage sales, flea market, Happy Mother's Day, dog missing, free kitties. I wouldn't be as aggressive of taking those down along with the police department if the people would put them up and take them down. The problem is, they don't take them back down, and then the wind and the rain, they're in the street. One of my main priorities this time of the year is to keep the town neat. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we now turn to the agenda. The first item in the agenda under the police department is a resolution. It's entitled Revoking Handicapped Parking Space on Avenue B, whereas Chapter 256 of Vehicles and Traffic permits the establishment, handicapped parking spaces by resolution, whereas by Resolution Number 201318 adopted on April 18th, 2013, the council of the City of Latrobe established a handicapped parking space at 30 Avenue B, property of Deborah Stanko, whereas the council now desires to repeal said resolution and cancel and terminate the above-described handicapped parking space, now therefore be resolved, Section 1. Resolution Number 201318 entitled establishing handicapped parking space on Avenue B being the same, is hereby repealed, Section 2, that the handicapped parking space located on the southerly side of Avenue B is to be specifically 30 Avenue B, adjacent to property of Deborah Stanko, being the same is hereby canceled and immediately terminated. Section 3, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer, being hereby authorized and directed to take all steps necessary carrying into effect this resolution, and Section 4, that you, within resolution, shall take effect immediately resolved in council, the state, and motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Still move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldenary, may I have a second?
A second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forrest? Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Jim, I'm assuming she's moved? Ms. Stanko is moved? Is that the reason we're removing this handicap?
I cannot tell you the reason. It was asked to be put on the agenda, and I put it on the agenda.
She didn't...
She moved, Jim?
She didn't move. What happened is it turned into a parking war. Her neighbor also is a handicapped individual. Ms. Stanko paid the application fee, got the sign put up, and her neighbor basically said, "Thank you for the sign," and started parking in front of her house. So Ms. Stanko requested the sign be removed and requested her money back for the application.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 201321. Mr. Boldenary?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
And you'll recall several months ago, a citizen appeared before us with a complaint regarding what we called the jake brakes. And we did receive a letter from PennDOT indicating that there were certain streets, one of them being Main Street, I believe Depot the other, and essentially those that would be state-operated streets. But we could enact such an ordinance to retard or to prohibit brake retarders. So the motion at this point would be to have me prepare the ordinance for advertising.
May I have a motion?
I so moved.
Jim, a second, please.
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo, any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this will not apply to vehicles that are municipal in nature. Is that correct? Is that the way you'll be forming the motion? Like fire trucks and so forth?
I can, if that is the intent of council.
Well, that'd be my intent.
I think we asked that question before, and they told us that they never used the jake brakes.
Joe? Yeah, we asked that last time, I think.
Pardon?
We asked that last time.
Yeah, I know. Are we going to exempt them or not? That's what I...
At this point, the motion is not so structured, Mr. Jim. If you want them exempted, I would suggest to make a motion to amend the motion put before you, and if it passes, then they would be exempted.
Just a...
Yes, I do want to amend it.
You need a second?
I think that would be exempting municipal vehicles, especially when they're in the line of duty. That would be my motion to amend. Your motion, Mr. Kelly.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Now, we're open for discussion, and then vote on the amendment first.
Amendment, any questions, discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to urge the council to vote no on this authorization. Route 98, State Route 981, it travels through the city, is essentially a flat road. The use of jake brakes on this road is probably next to nonexistent. It will only cover State Route 981. We're getting into an area which would be, again, overregulation, unnecessary ordinance on board. I urge the council to vote no.
I don't think you were here that meeting, were you? Oh, were you here? Oh, you were here, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure you were.
Elliot, did you talk to PennDOT about this?
Have I? We were, as instructed, I asked PennDOT, you know, what roads would be acceptable. PennDOT passed to grant a blessing, so to speak, and they did, saying that we could do it. That did not come with a recommendation to or not, it just said simply you may.
And I think we also limited, it's been limited now to Route 981, and I certainly it doesn't reach the height of tall grass, but nonetheless, it is a noise, it is an environmental...
I was instructed to look at 982, 981, Lincoln, Lincolnier, and PennDOT said that any one of those would be...
This is just for 981?
Okay. Well, that isn't part of the motion. I mean, I, it says certain streets, and I have that list from PennDOT. Now, if council is saying just 981 and nothing more, that's fine, but I think, again, we should amend and limit it to that.
Well, the problem here, Mr. Kelly, is in the agenda that we received says prohibiting retarder brakes on State Route 981, and then the motion does not conform to what is on the agenda. So I, you know, I don't know where we are then, really. What's your suggestion now?
No, what I'm suggesting is, I made the motion in light of the letter from PennDOT, which indicated, as Mr. Graziani said, about four streets. Personally, it doesn't matter to me. We can either prohibit them on all four streets or prohibit them on Route 981 only. But right now, the motion is not...
Or not approved.
Or not approved, you're right. So I think we need to vote on that amendment that you raised, and then just another amendment to the motion, limit it to Route 981.
Why would you do that? I mean, if you're gonna do it, why would you limit it to, I mean, if you're gonna do it at all, why limit it to 981? I mean, don't we care about the people that live on the other four streets? If this is really a problem, which I tend to agree with Mr. Baldinari, now, I don't think it's that big of a problem, but why would we limit it to 981 only if there are four streets in question?
There are five streets on the list. I have the letter here. It would be State Route 981, Lloyd Avenue, State Route 981, Depot Street, State Route 981, Main Street, Lincoln Avenue, and Lincolnier Street. All of these streets are...
Are flat.
Are approved by PennDOT, and they're flat, you're right. And that's where PennDOT says the brakes shouldn't be used, on flat streets.
Around front 982, out front of my house, they use them all the time. It's like, you know, these truck drivers with their children, brakes on their trucks. They use them all the time.
You would want them on 982, too, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I would.
I mean, makes no sense to just do it on 981 and then do it at all.
All right, well, I'm... All right, may I start over?
Sure.
If you will. And the problem really is there's a difference between what's on the agenda and what's in the motion.
I actually...
All right, so my motion would be to approve all streets that are listed in your list that you presented to us, Mr. Kelly, with a proviso in there that municipal vehicles on duty are exempted. That's my motion.
We still need a second to that.
I'll second now.
Okay, Mr. Jiven Angelo? Any questions or discussions on that?
Again, I urge council to vote no on this, as I said, another unnecessary ordinance on the book.
Anyone else?
It's just a voice vote.
It's a voice vote, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried.
Okay, now, that's simply, that's now amending it...
Did you say that?
I rewrote the motion.
You rewrote the motion.
Amending the agenda.
Okay. So the motion is to go ahead and then advertise? The motion to pass?
That is correct.
Quite exempting city...
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a motion as well, and it's under Administration Finance, and it is entitled Approving the Submission of an Application for Redevelopment Assistance Capital Grant Funding for the Reagglatation Refurbishing of the City Parking Garage. And whereas pursuant to the Capital Budget Project Itemization Act, the Office of the Governor has authorized the release of $1 million in recap redevelopment assistance capital program funding for the rehab and refurbishing of the city garage. And whereas in order to obtain this funding, the city is required to submit a formal and complete assistance application. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves the submission of an application for recap funding, and the amount of $1 million for the rehabilitation and refurbishing of the city garage. And whereas in order to obtain this funding, the city is required to submit a formal and complete assistance application. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves the submission of an application for recap funding, and the amount of $1 million for the rehabilitation and refurbishing of the city garage. In Section 2, the mayor, city secretary, city manager, and any other proper city officer are authorized and directed to file a formal and complete assistance application for the $1 million grant and to take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Wolfert, second?
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo? Any questions or discussions?
This is Resolution 2013-22. Mr. Forest?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinari?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is a motion only. It's under Administration of Finance, and it reads, "I'm moved we authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise the ordinance, approving entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with West Orland County for inspection of city parking meters." And essentially, this agreement would provide, I believe, that the county will take over this function. Am I correct, Mr. Rose Yen?
The county has been doing it for a number of years. However, the state legislature passed a law that codified that and required it be entering into an ICA agreement with the county commissioners to make it formal.
May I have a motion, please?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Baldinari, a second?
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo? Any questions or discussion?
The county has been doing it for a number of years.
However, the state legislature passed a law that codified that and required it be entering into an ICA agreement with the county commissioners to make it formal.
May I have a motion, please?
I so moved, Madam Mayor.
Baldinari, a second?
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo? Any questions or discussion? Questions, discussions, questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution. It's entitled Authorizing the City Manager to Sign or Hold Harmless Agreement for the Fireworks Display for the Fourth of July Committee. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves the signing by the city manager of a hold harmless agreement for the July 4th fireworks display proposed by Lehigh Specialty Melting Inc. in the form attached to this resolution. And Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The hold harmless agreement is attached as an exhibit. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forest, a second?
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo? Any questions or discussion? Questions, discussions, questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution. It's entitled Authorizing the City Manager to Sign or Hold Harmless Agreement for the fireworks displayed for the Fourth of July Committee. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves the signing by the city manager of a hold harmless agreement for the July 4th fireworks display proposed by Lehigh Specialty Melting Inc. in the form attached to this resolution. And Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The hold harmless agreement is attached as an exhibit. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forest, a second?
I'll second now.
Wolfert, any questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 2013-23. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forest?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinari?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution. It's entitled Authorizing the City Manager to Sign or Hold Harmless Agreement for the fireworks displayed for the Fourth of July Committee. Now therefore be resolved, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Latrobe hereby approves the signing by the city manager of a hold harmless agreement for the July 4th fireworks display proposed by Lehigh Specialty Melting Inc. in the form attached to this resolution. And Section 2, that the mayor, city manager, secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The hold harmless agreement is attached as an exhibit. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forest, a second?
I'll second.
Madam Mayor? Wolfert, any questions or discussion?
Move first.
Mr. Forest.
Mr. Forest?
Thank you.
Any questions, discussion? All right.
This is Resolution 2013-23. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forest?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinari?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution appointing a voting delegate to the Pennsylvania Municipal League Convention. Whereas the Pennsylvania Municipal League will hold its 114th Annual Conference from June 25th through June 28th, 2013, whereas the city manager will be attending and if authorized, will be entitled to vote on issues brought before the convention. In order for the city manager to vote on various items, the city must appoint him as its voting delegate, now therefore be resolved, Section 1. The Council of the City of Latrobe does hereby appoint Alexander J. Graziani, manager, as the city's voting delegate at the Pennsylvania Municipal League Convention held on June 25th through June 28th, 2013. Section 2, that the mayor, secretary of city council, and any other city officer are authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution resolved in council of this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Wolfert, a second, please?
I'll second now.
Mr. Forest? Any questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 2013-24. Mr. Forest?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution appointing a voting delegate to the Pennsylvania Municipal League Convention. Whereas the Pennsylvania Municipal League will hold its 114th Annual Conference from June 25th through June 28th, 2013. Section 2, that the mayor, secretary of city council, and any other city officer are authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution resolved in council of this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Wolfert, a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forest? Any questions or discussion? Questions, discussion? Any question? Okay, all.
This is Resolution 2013-24. Mr. Forest?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinari?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jiven Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote is six yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
The next item is under the Planning and Development Department, also a resolution entitled Land Development Request of Alan G. Cadlec. Whereas Alan G. Cadlec applicant has requested approval of a land development plan for a parcel of ground designated as 2125 Knox Avenue, situated in the fifth ward of the City of Latrobe for the erection of four townhouse units. Whereas the Latrobe Planning Commission has reviewed the land development plans and specification and has recommended approval, now therefore be resolved, Section 1, the land development plan of Alan G. Cadlec applicant according to the plans and specifications submitted to the Latrobe Planning Commission being the same as hereby approved. Section 2, the mayor, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Baldinari, a second, please?
I'll second now.
Mr. Jiven Angelo? Any questions or discussions?
That motion's not in our package.
Yeah, that, the coffee machine got screwed up and jammed, and I wasn't sure what it ran and what it didn't run.
Any questions or discussions?
That motion's not in our package.
Yeah, that, the copy machine got screwed up and jammed and I wasn't sure what it ran and what it didn't run. Right, the voting delegate, you get it twice.
You got it twice. Great. Okay, any questions, discussions, like this? Questions, discussion?
This is 2013-25. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
I abstain.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
There it is, five yeses, one abstain.
Thank you. Motion, Karen.
The last item on the agenda under the Public Works Department is simply motion and it reads, "I move we authorize the city manager or his designated to advertise for bids for the 2013 street paving project." It would be a simple motion.
May I have my motion?
I'll make that motion.
You have any answer, I'll second.
I'll second.
Mr. Forrest, any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, I guess that missed the copier also. I didn't see what streets were.
As we're, I mean, there was just the motion.
So we're making it, are we approving something? We don't know what's going to be done.
Well, as we discussed at the, as we discussed at the agenda meeting, we're going to be looking at getting a number for part of Josephine as well as Oak and Harding Street. The Josephine numbers, we discussed, the estimates from our engineer for doing the entire street, we would not be able to do. We are budgeting about $190,000 to spend this year and the bids for that or the estimates alone were over $500,000. When we narrowed or lowered the scope, it was still more than our budget. So what we're looking at doing is basically trying to get as far as we can with 190, that's why we want to advertise. And if the bids come in low enough, we'll be able to get the bottom part of that. The other portion is looking at doing Oak and Harding near the brewery. If you recall, we discussed the trucks and the turning movements into the brewery property are really wearing out the pavement. And there's an opportunity to do a public-private partnership with the brewery who is looking to cost share that project, in other words, contribute money from the brewery for, you know, public street improvement.
I guess my question is, are we going to be using our public works employees at all in this construction with this 190,000 as potentially a cost-saving method and stretching the dollar that we get?
I would have to defer to Joe on when the path was started.
I think this is a policy question. I don't think it's something for...
My question for Joe was, when the city began to outsource, if you will, to private companies to bid to pay, to do street paving, I don't know how many years now was my question. I believe it's been a policy of this city for a number of years to contract with the private sector with the thinking that they could do a competitive price. In order for us to do a paving job like that, and again, Joe could correct me, we would have to rent or lease equipment that we don't have right now.
We don't have any cost figures on that. You know, I have noticed, for instance, down at Oak Street where this turning problem seems to be, I didn't, I don't see any particular problem there. And on Josephine Street, I'm not sure that, I think it's been said up here that there's a spring that's causing the deterioration, and yet it seems like at all the manholes you have about the same problem as you have on Josephine Street. Almost every one has that same problem. That's why I'm just wondering, if we bid even Josephine Street, you're going to use up to 190,000. So I just wonder if we shouldn't be thinking in terms of maybe using our public works employees and in fact renting equipment and trying to find out what the problem is with these streets before we authorize you to go out on bids on a list that we don't even have. I mean, that's my problem. I mean, there's no list. We should at least know, you know, what's going to be done or the extent of it. I don't know. I'm just not ready to go along with authorizing the street framing program that I don't know what it consists of or where it's going to go.
I think what you're saying, I think, what I think what you're saying is, right now, as it stands based on our agenda meeting, the list is as much of Josephine as we can and the brewery with the co-op. That's the list. That, I mean, that's the list right now.
That's all we talked about.
Basically, that, that was the recommendations of Joe based on his analysis of what's, what's the worst of the worst. Right, Joe?
Correct.
You know, I think Richard makes a good point that we could maybe look at doing an analysis of...
And as part of the EIP study that we've talked about, one of the things that we're looking at is, does this city do the best with its resources? Are we good stewards of the taxpayers' purpose? The purpose of the so-called referred-to study earlier costing $80,000 is to analyze what's the best way moving forward. The reality is, the reason you note that particular project around the town or a problem around the town is this city has under-invested in its roads for decades and it's beginning to show. We have 40 miles of roads at the pace of investing $190,000 a year for roads will mean that some roads will not be touched in 80 years. So you can imagine going forward what that would look like without doing a significant paving program. Unfortunately, we do not invest in that part of our infrastructure. We're just trying to, right now, move along this year's program, but looking into the future, we have to have a game plan going forward of how to be serious about incrementally increasing the amount of money. Now, back to your point, what's the best way to stretch that money? It may be to do some of the smaller paving jobs in-house, some of the ones that would not involve, you know, total reconstruction and maybe do that. And that might be a way to get further, but whatever we can do to stretch the dollar, we've got to do it.
Well, I'm just wondering, we're approving it now, then most likely, a lot of these jobs don't seem to take place till September or October.
Well, this is the issue. We want to be able to get the prices as early as we can to get competitive prices.
I know at this agenda meeting, we kind of agree with Oak and Harding and Josephine.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
So, so we're going to look at Josephine, though. Is there going to be any digging done before we, or is there, what are we going to do?
What we're looking at doing is, starting at the bottom, because we're basically going to have to rebuild a drainage system of the street. So you can't start at the top. Unfortunately, that's where the worst pavement conditions are. Starting at the bottom, we'll begin to get as far as we can. Again, that's part of looking at the bid. We may look at the bid, Joe, and depending on how the prices come in and say, now what? You know, we might not be able to get as far as we would like to. Unfortunately, this is not an easy fix. But it will begin at the bottom where the drainage system will be built and then as you build the segments up. Okay, while you're project, you'll have that bottom section in place to be able to drain...
I guess I'm saying two things. First of all, I think we have to move in a direction where our public works people do the public works. And secondly, I'm not sure that there's a spring that exists in Josephine Street that's causing this trouble, because I think that the problem exists around all the catch basins and the manholes, almost the same thing, you know, where you have a dip. That's why I don't favor just starting to rebuild the storm system. So I just hope somebody could look at it before we put this thing out for bids or whatever, whatever we do. Anyway, that's my...
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Joe.
Joe, yes.
Yes, a point of clarification for this discussion. We're not rebuilding the storm system. There is underground springs there. We have salted that continuously all winter long. Even when our trucks were not out salting the roads overall, I still had to dispatch trucks there several times in a 24-hour period because the water kept seeping out and it would freeze over. As a matter of fact, a couple of times this year, I had to send a high lift up there to actually chip the ice away. We know that there is underground springs there. We are not rebuilding the storm system. What we are doing is putting underground drainage in and tying it into our storm system. And as the city manager tried to explain, unfortunately, the worst of Josephine right now exists at the top, but we can't start putting drainage there at the top because there's nowhere to drain into. So we have to start from the bottom up. And it might look odd to some of the people that travel that road every day, well, the top is a lot worse than the bottom. Why are they working on the bottom? Now, I can very well, as I did in the past, we can go in there, dig it up, and pave it, but I think without underground drainage put in place, we're wasting our money, honestly. I hope I was able to explain that a little better for everyone.
Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of the vote?
One other question. This does include underground drainage in this bid or whatever we're going to seek?
Yes.
Okay.
All am I, yes.
May I have a vote?
Motion.
Motion.
So moved.
We already have, we already did.
Need to vote now.
That's what I thought, we already did that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Well, that's a cornic.
Motion, Karen.
Madam Mayor, members of council, just a reminder, there will be an advertisement going into the paper advertising the change in time of our agenda session meeting, which normally is held at 6:30, will begin at 6 o'clock PM. I'll email a copy of this notice to all council members. And it's going to be on Tuesday, May 28th rather than on Monday, May 27th, which is Memorial Day. 6 o'clock PM is when the meeting will begin rather than 6:30. And that notice will go to the newspaper about Wednesday.
How do you want to finish business? Okay, new business?
John.
No, no, Debbie, you're not going to be there. I want.
I still don't know how to walk.
Just as a little bit of context, there's 32 city employees that fall into this category of employee recognition. Those 32 employees have combined to work 670 years for the city of Latrobe, averaging nearly 15 years per employee. This is kind of long overdue. Some of these folks have been here for over 20 years and we just want to recognize a few of them tonight. One of the blessings I've had coming here as city manager is coming to realize the excellent people we have working here in Latrobe. These people know what they're doing, they know what they're doing, and they care. They're very talented and they're skilled. They don't work for a lot of thanks or for that matter, a lot of money. They know they're paid well and they give a hard day's work. That hard day's work maybe includes helping the firemen cleaning up at night. It includes taking care of business in the middle of the night or answering a call, be it a domestic, a suicide, or some other stressful situation. They're putting their lives on the line, both in dangerous situations and in situations that if they don't address will become dangerous. And again, they do that, quite frankly, 24/7, and I feel it's important that our elected officials in the city officially recognize them. And so, working with Joe Bush and Chief Bumor, we have established in Barbuck a employee recognition program to recognize years of service. And I'm just so proud to be able to do this tonight. Included in that for, hopefully you'll see some of the city workers with some of these shirts on, that they'll be able to wear with pride, the logo of Latrobe and the good work they did will be reflected in the pride that they work in. So just, again, can't say enough about how good they are. Mayor?
First certificate of recognition is presented to Police Chief James Bumor.
We will have all of them come on.
In recognition for 29 years of outstanding service as a police officer, police sergeant, and the last two years as police chief. Chief Bumor was hired on June 13th, 1984, and reached 25 years of service in 2009. The city of Latrobe would like to express sincere gratitude to Chief Bumor for his unwavering dedication, selfless bravery, and honorable service to the community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe, 13th, May 2013.
Chief, please stand.
He forgets the whole face.
Nice picture, yeah.
All right, certificate of recognition presented to Police Sergeant Unzio Santa Colombo. I can call whatever I want, he's... Okay, in recognition for 29 years of outstanding service as a police officer and police sergeant for the Latrobe Police Department. Sergeant Santa Colombo was hired on July 1st, 1984, and reached 25 years of service in 2009. The city of Latrobe would like to express sincere gratitude to Sergeant Unzio Santa Colombo for his unwavering dedication, selfless bravery, and honorable service to this community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe. Joe Bush? In recognition of 29 years of excellent service as a mechanic, foreman, assistant supervisor, and the director of the Latrobe Public Works Department, Joseph Bush was hired on March 14th, 1984, and reached 25 years of service in 2009. The city of Latrobe would like to offer profound appreciation to Joseph for his professionalism, dependability, and exceptional service to the community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe. That doesn't say his shirt. Unless your name's Pamela. Pamela's next. You're not next, Claire. 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 Okay, certificate of recognition presented to Claire E. Fink, Jr. In recognition for 33 years of excellent service as a laborer and since October 30th, 1990, a mechanic at the Latrobe Public Works Department, Claire Fink was hired on July 23rd, 1980, and reached 25 years of service in 2005. The city of Latrobe would like to extend appreciation to Claire for her many years of dedicated, dependable, and exceptional service to the community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe.
And we'll be sure that Gary gets it. Gary's been with us.
Joe Bush said he was.
Gary's been with us since, as well, I think, he and Claire started like a day apart.
Same day.
Same day. Isn't that amazing? Since 1980, and Gary works not only with public works, but as a parking technician and everything else Joe signs and does.
In recognition for 33 years of excellent service as a laborer, mechanic, heavy equipment operator, and parking meter technician for the Latrobe Parking Works Department, Gary Carr was hired on July 23rd, 1980, and reached 25 years of service in 2005. The city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Gary for his many years of dedicated, dependable, and exceptional service to this community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe.
If Gary was here, he would hunt you again.
Michael here, Michael Miller? All right, certificate of recognition presented to Michael Miller. In recognition of 32 years of outstanding service as a dispatcher for the police department, laborer for public works department, and a duty driver for the city of Latrobe. Michael Miller was hired on June 17th, 1981, and reached 25 years of service in 2006. The city of Latrobe would like to extend deep appreciation to Michael's commitment, loyalty, and first-rate service to this community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe. All right, this is presented to George A. Seacrest. In recognition for 32 years of outstanding service as a duty driver for the city of Latrobe, George Seacrest was hired on July 27th, 1981, and reached 25 years of service in 2006. The city of Latrobe would like to extend appreciation to George for his commitment, loyalty, and first-rate service to this community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe. Certificate of recognition presented to Pamela Longner. In recognition for 25 years of excellent service as an administration clerk for the city of Latrobe, the administration department. Pam was hired on December 27th, 1988. The city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Pam for her many years of professional, highly motivated, and exceptional service to this community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe. It always helps to see. Well, she gets on this. We need you. Alan. Natalie. Certificate of recognition is presented to Madeline Smith. In recognition for 15 years of excellent service as an administrative assistant for the city of Latrobe Tax Department. Madeline Smith was hired on January 2nd, 1998. The city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Madeline for her years of professional, skillful, and efficient service to the community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe. And this is for Donna Smith. She's not here. In recognition for 15 years of excellent service as an administrative clerk for the city of Latrobe Tax Department, Donna Smith was hired on February 23rd, 1998. The city of Latrobe would like to extend sincere appreciation to Donna for her years of professional, skillful, and efficient service to this community and is awarded this certificate by the city of Latrobe.
Bill's one of our drivers and what we wanted to do, unfortunately, not all the guys could make it tonight, we wanted to recognize as many employees as we could and again, be able to honor them tonight with little cookies and coffee after we get together. So what we'd like to do, I guess, is certainly want to get a picture of the folks. Go ahead. I've got it good. Okay, thank you guys for many years of service for coming out tonight. Just a couple more. Joe, you look really handsome. I like that jacket. Thank you.
Thank you.